Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting dated Thursday, May 23, 2024. If we could start the meeting by rising, paying respect to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Number three, can we note the role?
Noted, there is a quorum. Mr. Berger, Mr. Blosick, and Mr. Ballard are all excused.
Okay. Number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number five, any conflict of interest or expertise contact? Seeing none, we'll move on to number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 5/9/24.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes dated 5/9/2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss?
They might want to ask. She might, yes.
Just to clarify again, you get three minutes to come up and discuss, but it's a, we're just hearing, we're not discussing.
Evelyn Archer, 750 Lake Edge Drive. Regarding the planned proposed PUD East Drainer, I acknowledge that the proposed PUD will probably be final approval by the folks. And I also acknowledge that the property owner has a right to develop the piece of property within planning and zoning guidelines. But I submit this request to your body and to the developer that there be no entry or exit on Oxford Lake Drive at Glassby and that it's already happily trafficked on OLD at Glassby. And that any boulevardized entries or exits be constructed on East Drainer Road. And I'm hoping that this might be satisfactory to meet your body's one or four guideline standards, that the development will meet the developers' objectives, but also the greater good of the surrounding community. And of course, the community nearby on north of Oxford Lake Drive and along Lake Edge Drive. With no entries or exits on East Drainer, many of the taxpayers who are already dealing with very heavy traffic on residential streets, especially on Oxford Lake Drive, will feel less resentful to your body and to Mr. Suave and to everybody as we all wait our turn in the vehicular line. There was a question a couple of meetings ago, whether there was a traffic study done or not. That might be beneficial to do along Oxford Lake Drive. Yes, with this proposal, I'm stating, traffic will be heavy on East Drainer for M24, but doesn't it make more sense to have it on a road rather than be on a less less sense rather, on a drive that leads into a residential and established neighborhood, which also serves as entry to the commercial industrial area? So, I just wanted to know also that Oxford Lake Drive was recently resurfaced, I think it was a couple of years ago. And so if there were construction, traffic, heavy trucks, et cetera, on Oxford Lake Drive accessing at Glassby as proposed by the developer, would we need to resurface Oxford Lake Drive all over again from Drainer to Glassby? And the wildlife is an issue. Wildlife is already coming north from near the Drainer area to south of Lakeville. So they're being displaced as well. And two weeks ago, there was a car that was hit on Lake Edge Drive. And it was totaled. And so with the curves and everything that are on Lake Edge Drive as well as leading to it on Oxford Lake Drive, there are some curves. And with patient people that are trying to navigate the traffic, proposed traffic that would be coming in or out of Glassby, as well as self-loan use, I think that a traffic study or at least some mitigation of the traffic by having all entries and exits on East Drainer would be indicated. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay.
My comments are directed to the master plan, so I assume that's part of the agenda.
It is. It is. Okay.
Same for us.
Same for us. Okay. All right. Seeing that, I will move on to number eight, commissioners' comments. Any discussions or topics or anything you guys would like to bring?
None for me today.
Nope.
Okay. Number nine, public hearing, which we don't have. Number 10, unfinished business, master plan update. So, you want to go first? Okay.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Ken Gross. I represent the Hubbard family and Oxford Hills Golf Course. The Hubbard family, as you know, has owned and operated the golf course since 1965, which next year is a 60-year anniversary for the course. Kathy Hubbard's out of town. She's visiting her daughter in Wisconsin. She could not be here tonight, but I want you to think of my words as hers because she would prefer to be here and speak to you directly. She does not, she's not the type of person that needs to speak through an attorney. But I'm here for her benefit because she's out of town. Sixty years is a long run. Times change and families grow. While there is no contract for a buyer for the golf course, the golf course is actively listing the property for sale and is in negotiation with no less than four developers. All of them are top-notch developers. They are all interested in the property and their goal is to develop it into a stellar residential community, which would include the best in park-like amenities, ensuring the right infrastructure is there to serve the needs of the community. And just as the golf course has been an integral part of the township community, the goal would be to create a residential development that pales in comparison to similar developments in the area. The goal is to really create a beautiful environment. The golf course, as you guys, you know, obviously well know, borders the village to the south and then progresses to the south with the lake in the southwest section of the property. The property in and of itself encompasses the precise stated residential land use goal as was presented in the materials for the May 9 Planning Commission meeting. And that's for, to do the following, which I'm quoting from the materials, to create, providing for a dense traditional neighborhood near the village borders with larger lots decreasing in density as distance goes from the border. So if you picture the golf course, in the upper top northeast section, it borders the village. And then as it goes down south into the west, you've got the big lake and you have the opportunity for the expansive-sized lots. Now, to accomplish this goal, there has to be proper density planning. It's a large area. If there are too few homes based upon the parameters that are set, the desired community is going to look compromised. It's going to be excessive space and sprawl and you're not going to be able to have the density amenities that come with density. Density creates opportunity for mixed use and it also creates a funding mechanism to put in the amenities that you want to make a community stellar. Those things such as lighting, quality signage, landscape, walkways, bricklayers, all the top items, top-line items that go with the top-notch community. It's a function and a necessity that there be density to help fund those things. So with regard to the plan as it's presently formulated and presented in the materials, and I realize it's in the formulation stage and it's for the commission to decide what is and what's not there, but I'm looking at the most recent comments that were provided for tonight's meeting. What we'd like to see is that the area designated on version two of the draft land use, of the draft land use map for the golf course property be designated as Village Residential, which permits a 9,000 to 12,000 square foot lot to construction. Now I want to direct you to the Village Residential category, which is defined in the materials that were presented at the May 9 meeting.
He doesn't have time for that, does he?
And those materials state
Does he have time for that?
that the Village Residential category was for core areas of Oxford Township in proximity to the village. The golf course property abuts in the northeast corner and as we look at it, that would be the proper designation, given the definitions that have been presented for the different categories. I want to make note that the Woods of Tullamore, which is directly to the northeast of the golf course and under versions both one and two, was designated Village Residential. And the same also goes for the property directly to the north of the course on Drainer Road. So that's in terms of the land use designation. My last comment is just to go to the, also presented there was the small area plan, which we think is a good idea for the Oxford Hills Golf Course, but we don't believe it's prudent and/or fair to cap the density at one dwelling unit per net acre. Instead, what we suggest would be to make, take all the elements there, but replace that and say that it could be, provide that it can be up to two and a half to three dwelling units per net acre. Not that it has to be, no entitlement or right, but that it can be up to that. And what we suggest is by doing that, it gives the, it covers two things. It makes it consistent with the stated goal of allowing for high density close to the border of the village and then spreading it out. And number two, it gives the commission the latitude to evaluate the project as it's presented and make a decision which could then be consistent with the new master plan that's developed. Sticking back to the two and a half acres per unit is stepping back to the zoning that's been in board for years. This community has grown remarkably. It's, and with everybody's contributions and vision for the future, we think that the master plan goal is to be adaptable to future use and future ideas. So the one thing that we're asking you to give consideration to is not to necessarily change it. Don't bind yourself to something that the commission wouldn't want. We understand those issues. But leave the flexibility to entertain the proposals when they're presented so that you have the ability, if you want to approve it, to avoid having a problem of having to answer, well, this is inconsistent with the new master plan. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. If you don't mind, I'm just going to pass you this quick exhibit. I always feel picture representation sometimes helps, so. Drive the point home. All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Spencer Schaefer. I'm with Schaefer Development, joined here by my father, Steve Schaefer. We are a local, family-run real estate development company with offices in Farmington Hills, Michigan. Over the past, over the past year, the Schaefer team has had the opportunity to meet with members of the Master Plan Steering Committee as well as planning staff to share our conceptual vision for the Oxford Hills Golf Course property. We've had the opportunity to work closely with Ken Gross and the Hubbard family over the last year, but we have not reached any type of financial arrangement to purchase the property from the Hubbard family. We wanted to wait and see how the master plan process evolved before we got too far along in that process. Navigating around a master plan update is always tough. It appears we're hitting a critical juncture and we wanted to share some thoughts. We feel that it's critically important to note and understand the densities that have already developed and that are planned on the future land use plan in the adjacent areas in close proximity to the golf course. Some of the densities I'm about to mention, they're on the sheet in front of you, but they're in terms of gross acres and that'll be a pertinent point as we get a little bit later on in my conversations. So in the southwest corner of the property, there's the Hills of Oxford. That's a multi-family development, contains a combination of townhouses and single-family homes. And it's got 112 units across 27 acres. That is a gross density of 4.2 units an acre. Now, when I say gross, that's inclusive of all wetland areas. It's inclusive of all open bodies of water. So in reality, that density on a net acreage is going to be a little bit greater than it is on a gross acreage. So again, 4.2. On the north side of Drainer, there are properties that are zoned R1A and are future land use designated as Village Residential. The R1A zoning designation allows up to 6,000 square foot minimum lots, which, in the development business, based off of the calculations we do, believes is going to yield a density right around five units per gross acre. The Woods of Tullamore was approved under R1A zoning. Opposite the golf course, on the west side of LaPierre Road, there's a combination, a plethora of commercial, there's a mobile home community use, there's also a multi-family use. The Parkhurst Estates manufactured housing community has a density of six units, again, per gross acre and the Manitou Lake Apartments contains more than 9.5 units per acre. Now, talking a little bit more specifically about the golf course, we're looking within the heart of two thriving downtown areas. We've got the Village of Oxford in the north and we've got Lake Orient to our south. We feel this property deserves a very unique master plan community capable of meeting the evolving needs of Oxford Township residents for the years to come. So what does that look like? We believe it's critical to have an element of the plan that's dedicated to empty nesters, to seniors, to people who are 55-plus, who want to age in place within the community. They want to move down from their large acreage lot to a more manageable housing solution in a condo where they no longer have to take care of loans, they no longer have to take care of snowbrowing. Just as importantly, a conventional, single-family component that allows young couples, young families, growing families, the opportunity to relocate or move into the township. For the attached handout, the blended average density for completed communities adjacent to Oxford Hills is more than 3.55 units per gross acre. Now, Mr. Gross stated, one of the recommendations from the planning consultant was to allow a density under a PUD that was equivalent to one unit per net acre. They have blended density in front of you. It doesn't include the mobile home park on the other side of the street. They have six units an acre. It doesn't include the R1A that's eventually going to be developed just north of us on Drainer Road, which is going to be able to build up to five units an acre. So when we do consider those other two developments, the blended density per gross acre is close to four, per net acre, I'm sure it's substantially higher. To create a vibrant, mixed-generational community on the Oxford Hills Golf Course property, it's critical the density be above the one unit per net acre currently recommended by staff. To recommend a density vastly below the blended average that we calculated, we feel would underserve the development potential of the Oxford Hills property. Now, this is our subjective recommendation. We've put together some plans. We've had the chance to share them with a number of individuals. I don't know if you on the planning commission have had a chance to see them yet, but we feel a density between 350 to 400 units would be proper on this property. Now, let's talk about the context of that. That seems like a huge number, but that's two and a half to 2.9 units per net acre. If we look at it on a gross acre, that's under two units per gross acre. Again, within the context of some of these adjacent developments that are closer to 3.5, four units an acre, we feel it's a lot more manageable. And in the plan we put together, by having that type of critical mass, we were able to offer three diverse, different types of housing product and create a plan that contained over 40% open space. On several occasions, we've heard from the township, and this was specifically from the steering committee, and when we'd had the opportunity to attend certain master plan events with planning staff and the supervisor and other folks at the township, that if additional density was to be considered anywhere in the township, it made sense in this area. We have brought a John LaPierre Road. We're in very close proximity to the Village of Oxford and Lake Orient is right at our doorstep. The character of adjacent and planned developments in the area directly surrounding Oxford Hills Golf Club warrants a unique and transitional style of single-family housing, which can help set apart the more intense uses that exist on 24 from the lesser intense single-family uses to the east. And with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will turn it over to Mr. Mateo.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Pasalafu. I'm a work associate. I'm here as a township planning consultant. First, I would just like to thank the Schaefers. That was probably most expedient information. If I had development involvement, don't reviews people that quick, it would be great. We appreciate the feedback. So for tonight, it's kind of a continuation of where we were two weeks ago as it relates to discussing the future land use map, the vision goals and objectives, design guidelines. But then also we presented a full, not a full, but I would say a 90% draft of the land use chapter for the master plan. Kind of before we get to those, there's a few housekeeping items I'd like to go over. One was in the memo that was provided to you this evening. We discussed a little bit about the remaining budget, kind of the timeline that we were working on. And since the time that this memo's come out, there's been some conversations that have alluded to the possibility to extending the, I would call it the soft deadline that we were given to have this master plan adopted by the end of the year. It sounds like there's an aspect, I'm sure you got that going to early '25, you know, as it relates to committing additional time to drafting. So I just wanted to kind of update the planning commission on that information, get a quick gauge as to whether or not there are any major objections to the possibility that that time might get extended at the beginning of '25.
Not for me.
I wouldn't have any problem with that.
Okay. All right. Something else that we wanted to pitch base on was just kind of some clarifications and feedback from the last meeting as it related to kind of where these materials are coming from as it relates to what's influencing those drafts. And really overall, the broad theme to be used here is that we're trying to, we're trying to balance the development or the future of the township. And the way in which we're proposing to do that is really driven by the community surveys, the community events, the different stakeholders that we've heard from, our day-to-day life at the township. You know, we're here two days a week. We see a lot of development, not development, but we see a lot of plans come and go. We hear a lot of conversations at the tables and things of that nature. So really, the goal there is to have the information be provided in a way, developed in a way that comes from the community, comes from the context of working in the community, comes from the stakeholders, to kind of, again, reach this balanced development goal where, you know, again, it's a broad statement to say not too much, not too little, and preserve what you can, but that's kind of the quick backdrop of it. Another clarification that we want to offer up is that as it relates to the community engagement and things of that nature is, you know, the steering committee's, the steering committee's role in the master plan is very important because community engagement itself is important. And so the steering committee is put together to really inform, develop, inform and help execute the community engagement strategy and really to help us network. You know, people, people who we reach out to through the steering committee are, you know, individuals that have a broad network throughout the community. They can kind of direct us in a manner to say, hey, you know, if we approach the community this way, or should we reach out to these groups or so on and so forth. And that's, that's kind of the culmination of community engagement effort. Obviously, their feedback as individuals, as important stakeholders in the township is welcome and taken, but their primary role is that of community engagement. Because I know we discussed that a little bit two weeks ago and we've discussed it prior to that as well. But we wanted to offer up this clarification. So as it relates to the items on the agenda for this evening, I mean, we have goals, objectives, we have goals, objectives and vision. We have design guidelines. We've got the future land use map, which has been adjusted version two. Version one was the draft that was discussed two weeks ago. Version two is what has kind of come from those comments that we need to work on further. And then a conversation with the land use chapter and then kind of some areas that have been provided in that chapter as well. So with that, there's not any questions. We can move on to the vision, goals, objectives.
Any questions?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. So, vision, goals and objectives. And I do know that from the last meeting, Commissioner, you've made a comment, you were primarily focused on the vision statement. And you had made a comment about the portion of the vision statement that says between the zone community, existing and planned infrastructure and the natural environment. I believe you had made the comment that plan maybe would be better served as managed, the word managed. That was the only text added I could receive from two weeks ago. And I just wanted to gauge if they were, again, the vision was kind of our primary focus, but are there any other tweaks, changes, clarification edits that you guys feel are appropriate in this section? I'd like to get those this evening.
Just the vision?
It could be the, if you've got others, I'll, I will take them.
I have, I have a question on one of the objectives. I'm trying to remember where it is exactly. Has to do with water and sewer. There it is. It's in two different places. So, objective six for community character. I'm trying to get, understand the background there. It says, discourage the extension of public sewer and water service beyond urban service boundaries in M24. Why would we discourage that? I'm confused.
So I guess if that was more relates to the more that those get expanded beyond the primary service boundary that's currently in the plan, the more development you're going to see in that area. Now, if we want to open up the conversation to expanding that primary service boundary, I think that, I think it could go either way. I think this language could change because we are extending the utilities currently beyond that or the primary service boundary changes, but this stays the same because we've expanded the geography.
I guess my big point on it is just the word discourage. You know, if we wanted to soften it, maybe I could understand, or just take it out. I'm not sure why it's an objective in our master plan.
Excuse me. Mr. Spitz, could you make sure you're speaking into your mic because they can't hear you on the television.
Sure. Thank you. I'm just wondering why we want to discourage it, right? Or why even put it in there as an objective anyway? Because if you need water and sewer, to me, it's beneficial to have water and sewer wherever you can put it because you get away from well and septic, especially if you're in the lake area. I mean, there's a whole bunch of environmental issues that are potential there. I know we have wells or septic fields out there that are in dire need of hooking up to something or being replaced.
Sure.
Right? So to me, it just sounds like we're against water and sewer. That's kind of what it makes it sound like to me.
No, no, no. And that's, and that's fine. Again, utilities, infrastructure, you start threading the needle between.
Right. And I think it's the other part, other location was in utilities later, I think.
But it could be, this might be a place where the word managed, you know, manage the extension of public, things of that.
Manage might be a better word. I don't like the word discourage.
No, I appreciate it.
Am I outpaced?
I'm discouraged by this. We have a master plan that Sharp Engineering is working on for water and sewer. I would suggest that we check on that, see where that is coming back to us and then we could address item number six very easily because I do think that the intent of the township, starting this month, I know for a fact that we're going to be moving dirt on M24 in front of Myers. And as soon as that's done, or in the midst of that, we've had inquiries of going further up 24. So I would suggest that we check base with that. We do have a water sewer district. I don't know if the master plan was looking, the water sewer master plan or water sewer guidelines that we operate to is looking to expand that up, but those are some good questions that need to be looked into or answered.
Is it something to where the statement was more broad to say that, you know, that this objective would reference that plan?
Well, the whole purpose of the water sewer committee to engage Mr. Sharp Engineering to do that was to have it for the master plan and that's forthcoming. So if you haven't heard from that, then maybe that'd be a note to write down to do a little follow-up on that to see where that lie, where that is.
And I would support that. I just, I mean, to me, you might have just reworded the whole thing because there are some areas that you want to have water and sewer, and you want to try to drive it there where you can. And especially if there's an environmental issue, you definitely want to try to get it there. And this makes it sound like you're going to let that happen and you're not going to push for it, which I'm not for.
No, that's, that's what I wanted. So I think, so then for this one, I think it should be crafted based around the direction that the water sewer master plan is kind of crafting.
As well as direction from what you hear within the office in regards to the interest of pushing farther north of Dunlap Road. Right now, we're going to run it up to Dunlap Road to service Stony Lake Park, as well as be able to work in our Brad Dewey area. That will also connect all the property on the north side of the Myers gas station. So we need to look, we need to look closely at that.
Okay. So we can, so we can take a look and see where that update is. We can craft something as it relates to that, but whatever we craft is generally going to be in support of where.
I think Commissioner Spitz is very clear. Discourage is kind of a negative word to start a sentence off with. I don't think we need to do that. We can come up with better words than discourage.
And I would agree, yeah. And I agree, we should be looking at the master plan for water and sewer, but we need to think, I mean, we're thinking longer term than that too.
I think that was right out of the old master plan, if I remember right. So let's not, let's, the purpose of this new master plan is to get away from the old. We've contracted you to make some extensive changes and rewrite. So let's not try to glean too much out of the old master plan as far as wording and things. Let's come up with our own creativity in regards to that.
Vision goals, objectives, any of that?
Everything else, I didn't have issue. That was my biggest concern. Any else for a draft, I'm okay with. You know, as I read through it more closely, as we get farther along, I might have a recommendation on word here, a recommendation on word there. But in general, I'm okay with it, other than that one.
I'm going to go backwards a little bit up to goals, visions, objective and vision. One of the words that's coming out on a regular basis in the township and in my meetings, whether it's on the ORC meeting, or whether it's on the master plan, and I'm not giving a commercial, I'm just saying a broad way, is the word balance. And you brought that up earlier tonight. The township has to balance things out. And that is part of the management of the township is to make sure that we have a balanced township. Now, that is in zoning, that is in our infrastructures of our water sewer. That's why that plays such an important role. That goes all the way to our safety path, safety path master plan. That has to be balanced within our community. We have parks and recreation facilities that we're trying to make sure that they're answering some of the, some of the responses back from our survey, responses back from the meeting up at the Legacy Center, to get non-motorized transportation going better than what it is. Only improvement, we have a beautiful park out here on Seymour Lake that we'd like to get connected. So that, that's part of that balance. Traffic flows are a balance. Developments are a balance. Infrastructure are balances. And so we have to come up with ways in which we can design or develop this new zoning district map that is balanced. And right now, we, we used information to, thinking that we would put a fire, fire station refill out north of town. And we did that with ARP money from the government, COVID money. And that is mainly to surface our, the trucks. When the, when the tankers are empty, they can drive in there, replenish, and go out north. Well, out north isn't the area that's being developed right now. It's the Drainer Corridor. That's why we have all the interest in our Drainer Corridor of M24. We have many, many different developments that are either on their way, partially on their way, or being, or being discussed. So that's why it's very important that we remember the word balance when we work through this.
Understood.
So the vision, going, sorry to give that long talk. Somehow in there, we need to better the word, better the terminology of what we mean by balance. And you do have the word in there. I appreciate that. But I'd like to see that improved a little bit.
Well, along with that, and I mentioned this to Mateo, if you start out page one, where it talks about goals, it uses the word community. It really ought to be a township. You know, the master plan is for Oxford Township. And there are several places here where they've used the word community that could very well have township substituted for it and would make it clear, I think, that that's what we're, what we're dealing with. See, one of the places is right here on goals.
I see it.
I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I would think that that would be more descriptive and correct.
I'm good either way. We can go township, we can go community.
I kind of look the other way on that one. I, I actually like the community because to me township, it's business. It's just an area. Community is like a family type atmosphere. That's when I, when I read that in, is I read that family atmosphere into the community character.
I see both sides of it, but we go down to our vision. It's Oxford Township. The Oxford Township is a place of natural beauty and economic prosperity. The township will preserve and expand these assets in a manner that provides balance between the growth community, existing in the planning, infrastructure, and natural environments.
So where we at? Get your name.
I'm on the community side. And I understand what you're saying, but it is the, it is the Oxford Township master plan. So to me, that defines what it is. And I agree with Corey on the word community and what it really means. To me, it's more, it's a family character. It's a whole, quote, community that we're talking about. It's not, I mean, to me, it's rather rigid when you say Oxford Township. When you say community, it's more welcoming, is what I'm thinking, from my perspective.
Sure. Getting a sense like community sticks.
We're tied, two, two. We need three more people here to make that.
I don't have, I, I don't want to vote on this from my perspective. I think we need to make sure that the, the flavor of our master plan.
Well, when I think community, I include the village.
Yeah.
Okay. But nothing we're doing here really includes the village of Oxford. It includes the township that's all around.
Agree. But I would argue that we referenced the village in here a few times.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're two entities that can't exist without the other.
That's correct.
And I think that's, that's the, which you guys kind of, the road you walk when you make certain decisions.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Well, that was, that's the biggest.
Put that one in, put that one in the parking lot. Put that one in the parking lot later.
You played your time to rest your card on the F. Okay. All right. So I guess, Commissioner Nold, if you want to kind of go back to you with one, I guess, one, we talked about kind of wanting more balance in that. And is that balance ever related to the issue of the zoning, the infrastructure, the parks and recs? Is that what you want us to try to verbalize or dictate the control? Is that the, then would you like to try to write as far as what we are balancing? What are we balancing?
Well, you'd mentioned two different things there. You, you talked about the infrastructure. You talked about parks and recs. Those are, in my mind, those are two different things. Parks and recs is, is part of the community. It's, it's a, it's an asset to the community as far as things that people can go do. That ties into the safety pass. It ties into the, all the different areas. Then you get into the infrastructure. The first thing I, I think about is, is how are we going to support new development within the township? Now, we know that we had an issue, and I don't mean to talk about this, but all the time, the sewer line running out north of town, we know we had a need for that. So we're in the midst of putting that in. That's infrastructure. That's going to benefit a tremendous amount of residents directly and indirectly.
So what, so I guess for me is, because the way this was written is I'm trying to balance development and preservation. That's what I'm trying, I'm trying to thread that needle. That's what we feel is all this statement says. Wouldn't, I'd say we're right.
About balanced development.
If I'm, if I'm balancing, am I balancing something other than those two things?
Thank you.
That's fair. I can, I love thinking.
I'd have to dwell on that some more.
That's fine. That's a draft. All right. Well, with that kind of being part of it, are there any other, it sounds like I got a little bit of work to do.
I have one, transportation. Most specifically, when we're trying to find other routes outside of just M24.
I'm sorry, which objective are you on?
Yes, thank you.
Objective. It says transportation. It's on page six.
Yeah.
Where we have the Thomas Road extension.
That one has its own list of objectives.
Yeah.
He jumped way ahead.
I'm sorry. Objectives, am I getting into too much of the details right now?
No, no. I mean, this is a line, you got, you got hard edited or changed course about one tonight?
Okay. It's on, actually, if you go in the packet, it's on page sixteen.
It's, it's under the transportation.
Transportation section, right, where we, I know in our old master plan, we had references to a few of these. My, my real question is, is there been any more discussion with road commission, anybody else about some of these routes? Because to me, it's almost a copy paste of what we had in there before, and I'm not sure we're thinking big enough.
From a master.
From a master plan perspective, you know, everybody knows, even if these developments go in on M24, you know, near Drainer, or even north in the future, right? We know our infrastructure around roads is not adequate, right? So to me, these are small little band-aids for that. Or is there anything else we should be considering to put in here, even if it's, I mean, a rough outline of reconsidering additional north-south routes to help mitigate the amount of volume you're going to see going up M24 through the village, right, and through, through other parts of Oxford?
Right.
Because we already have a problem with it today, and Orient has a problem with it today. So what other options can we consider? I mean, if there's none, there's none, right? But I think we need to at least have a look at it and maybe somehow reference in there that we're going to, at a minimum, continue to study alternate routes other than these four or five we have listed.
One might be the proposal of widening Baldwin. You know, and taking that all the way up to Oakwood.
I mean, I know that in the, there's been discussion in the past about a bypass also around the village, which I know is good or bad, depends who you've talked to.
Could be that bypass.
Right. So, but it's, go, go ahead. It's just, I think we need, to me, I think we need more in there.
I think all these comments of the commissioners are great. But in today's world, as from what I understand, getting money and getting MDOT or, or the county to come in and do those things is very difficult. But to put in there and say that we're going to study and continue to study, continue to look at it, and our desire would be to have things changed in our roadways around here. But as far as getting it done by means other than township money, that came up in the, in the survey to see if individual residents were interested in using township money to, to do road repair or road work. Excuse me?
What was the answer?
There's, there were people in favor of that.
Really?
So, they talked, I don't have the, the statistics on that. I think it'd come down to tax, yeah. But I, I think that needs to be something that's, that's looked at or analyzed with a commitment in writing in the master plan that that will be, that will be done or continue to be done.
So something to be, some, some stronger, broader language.
Agree with that. But I mean.
Not necessarily broader, but more pinpointed.
Well, I guess I'm thinking the other way. I'm thinking more broad. Because to me, I don't, yeah, money's always an issue.
Yeah.
All the way through government. And half the things that have been done in Oxford Township are around the county, around the state, and around the country over the last couple of months is because of COVID and ARPA money that was been thrown all over and probably, depends on who you talk to, probably way too much, right? So we're taking advantage of some of that with the sewer system we're putting in up to Brad Dewey. I, who knows if that's not going to happen again in another twenty, twenty-five years that we go through another unfortunate situation, the government decides to throw money at people again. I hope not, right? Hope and pray that that doesn't happen, but doesn't mean we shouldn't have a plan.
But we ought to be prepared with a plan that could be shovel-ready as soon as we had some money.
Yeah. I'm not sure I'd be ready for shovel-ready, but we should have some type of thought process already done that said, yeah, we need to start this.
I think it's a good idea. The thought process needs to be there, not the engineering.
Engineering's the hard part. And that's when you start putting pencil and paper, right? But.
Spending money.
I mean, even if you put some examples in there that, oh yeah, such as a bypass to the village, or such as this, such as a bridge from that goes over Lake Orient and Oxford. I mean, that's crazy, but they've done it in Florida. So I'm just saying, you know.
I know. And so in the land use plan chapter that we'll get to a little bit later, there are in that section, conversations about like Thomas Road Extension, Hummer Lake Road Extension.
Yeah. And that's where I'm at. That's where I'm looking at.
Well.
That's where I'm looking at.
I, I honestly think those, those have been well reviewed by myself. I think we need to bring that before a group of people and see if it's, if it's something we want to carry on.
I mean, my personal thing.
That's, that's two master plans old, that, that listing.
I don't think they're bad ideas. I think they eventually, with development, think they need to happen anyway. But, you know, for us, they've been here long enough. Some people don't want them because they don't want to change their dirt road to paved road because they don't want the extra traffic. They live on a dirt road for a reason. And they want that to stay in this community. And so, I mean, it's a mixed bag. But it doesn't mean, these are bad ideas. I think eventually they need to happen because of the cross-traffic.
But then, then I suggest you put them on our priority because today's world, tonight is an example of a lot of focus on M24 and Drainer Road. And some of the northern areas might not be as populated as what we're expecting to see in the M24 Drainer area.
And my only comment, I would be cautious about putting a priority on anything in a master plan. Right? It's more of, it's more of a larger.
You're right. Stay and be corrected. Yep.
There's just some, some examples that we're thinking about, and maybe some broader points that we put in there.
All right. I will only get to that portion. I mean, I.
Sorry, I jumped in.
No, you're fine. For the transportation section, though, it seems as though, again, these, these need to be a little bit bigger, pointed, but not direct there. Look there?
Fair.
Fair.
All right. So with physical objectives, going once, going twice, going three times?
I do have one question. Kind of circling back to that objective number six.
Under which goal?
Under community character. The discourage of the extension of public sewer. Because when I went down to the industrial land use, most of those objectives are around, you know, relocating, restructuring, whatever. If we're discouraging water sources or sewer sources up into areas that we would like to see some industrial, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose?
I agree.
And that's why discourage is going away.
Okay.
No, I get the point.
That's a great point.
Again, it's a, it's a conversation about, right, the development that you, you desire, the development that you don't, and what you want to preserve. So like, that's part of that conversation, that balanced development, right? Conversations about industrial and what kind of infrastructures are going to need, you know, and how much do we want to anticipate is going to follow that infrastructure. So, but yeah, I think that falls in line with, we've got to work that one out a little bit. Okay. All right. Well, great. I appreciate it. It wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, but it was, it was intended to be on that list of things that we were going to go over. But the design guidelines, I'd like to go through those next. This was another document that did not change from the last meeting, although I do recognize that Commissioner will, will, will oversee.
Will oversee.
Will oversee.
He'll get it eventually.
Someday. Did make comments about how in all of the areas, he wanted to see kind of increased landscaping buffers between the uses. So that is something that, you know, if there's a consensus here that that should be a priority in all three of these sections, we can put it in. But I recognize that he did make that comment the last meeting and it's not in this draft.
You have, you have made a disadvantage. Where is that in our paperwork?
Page twenty-six. Page twenty-six.
Got it.
So again, these guidelines are, they're set up by a geography predominantly along M twenty-four, south of the village. Uh, M twenty-four over the village, and then kind of the, the most northern portion of the, of the township itself. And it's really kinda catered around the different designs that could, that fit the, I guess, the existing and potential character of those areas. You know, south of the village being more of a smaller, uh, downhollowed field, north of, directly north of the village being more of a suburban? You know, kind of retail, traditional suburb, and beyond that, more highway, more highway design with a planned industrial and things of that nature. So, and this, these guidelines can kind of set up a justification for when we get to the, you know, the zoning element of it, and we start to write new zoning regulations. This can kind of provide a justification for the type of requirements that we're gonna have in those new, either those modified or new zoning jurisdictions when we get to that step after the master plan. So, with that, I would, I would take any edits, comments, revisions, good as they are, again, this is that? We are in drafting form, if, if something is caught down the road, you know, there is time to discuss it and change it, but? For tonight, I, we would like to start to record, again, we're putting together a draft. So we have to start assembling these chapters with this information.
I'm not prepared to answer any of these today, I need to go back through these with the fine-tune goal.
What does the term, while these guidelines should be applied to their fullest extent? The township should recognize that site constraints may limit the extent to which these elements can be incorporated into a development.
I think that's just kind of speaking to, no two sites are the same, no two uses are the same. And so, uh, we might sit and say that we want so much of a setback, or we want so much of a buffer. If that buffer in and of itself is the impeding factor to an otherwise desirable development, you wanna leave yourself some room?
I, I gotta have a general question.
Sure.
The use of design, the word guidelines, because we have a design guideline ordinance, correct? Should we use guidelines in a master plan? Because to me, that's almost too specific.
See, for us, the, it's almost kind of the, I guess in the planning world, it's, it's almost meant to be, it's not considered specific.
Okay, maybe I'm overthinking it.
These were designed prescriptions, you will do this, you know?
But our other ordinance is called a guideline, so that's kind of what's throwing me off, I think.
I got you. Yeah, and that's a, right, and that's an ordinance, so I mean, that's, check this box, check that box.
Yeah, but it says guidelines, which, instead of specifications or requirements or something, so maybe we have to change that.
Yeah, I think so. I would also check that first paragraph, says? With the a- annual average daily trips of over nine thousand along the corridor? Is, is that a today's number, or is that?
That, that is a today's number, or at least that is a number based off of the most, I believe it's the most recent sound contract.
Okay.
Yeah, with that, so it might be a few years old, but it's the most recent that's available.
Is there any projections in the future?
Yes, I can't speak them off top, I have, I do know we have, we are currently at it.
So, instead of using like a specific number like nine thousand, do we say nine to twelve thousand, or something like that? Kinda open it up as a range.
Yeah, providing.
I appreciate the fact that you put on that? Site constraints, I think that's an important factor, particularly as we head north out of town. We have the opportunity to have many site constraints as that area gets developed.
Well, you know, um. We give some examples here of where parking lots are, respective buildings. But it would be desirable, I don't know whether you're familiar with the area where Culvers? Tractor Supply and Leo's is? You know, there, there's two entrances far apart, and then there's? A two-lane back and forth between those three places. And it, we ought to be considering some of that where we've got room to do that? And reduce the amount of traffic coming in and out on twenty-four.
So you're kind of, you know, focused on like internal traffic management?
Service drives, I think is what you're talking about.
A service drive would be appropriate.
That, that's been discussed, uh, coming out of Culvers, going through, I don't know, uh, Leo's? And going north, or going south into the end property down there, which I think is owned by Oxford Bank.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. And a point of clarification, I'm glad you brought up the images, obviously, these, these images are here for context for you guys, we would develop? We would develop graphics internally that would be of Oxford Township, and you guys would see them, be able to tweak them as far as the examples that we're providing? From a layout perspective, I just wanted to give context on, this is kind of what we're talking about. So these images would not make their way to the plan. Different images to help guide wood.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments on design guidelines?
No.
No? Alright, well then with that? We will jump over to the, the future land use map. So, two weeks ago, so we've, we've included, uh, much documents and, and, and. This is the place for two, two, two lanes. Over here on the table, we have version one, going from right to left, we have version one, which was the, the first future land use? Uh, map draft done for this plan. Two weeks ago, uh, we received, there was, you know, good conversation about it, good initial feedback about? The pros and cons, so on and so forth, from that, we brought forth version two. Um, and really, it's, it looks at the expansion of light industrial, not, not by any great means, but? Maybe would be better suited, we kind of anticipate development up that way. Uh, and then there was kind of a, an adjustment, again, based on? Based on the, the feedback and kind of working with the community balance of the density of some of the zones. More or less kind of reducing the density through some of the zones that we were looking at, and again, trying to just? Get a better gauge on where development could be, um, what are the community goals as it relates to? Again, both types of residential development, types of industrial, places to preserve, so on and so forth. So, version two is, you guys are seeing it tonight. Based on the edits from last night, we're gonna mark up that map tonight, to kind of go through even further changes that may be needed there. Next one is your existing future land use map, I just wanted it up for context, kind of looking left to right. Next to that is the document that was included in the packet tonight, which again, highlights some of the differences and the changes from version one to version two. After that is your current zoning map, and then after that is, is a, is a map that we drafted that could be included in the master plan. Uh, we're trying to provide a little bit of context on, so it's, it's a change, improve? Or, uh, change, preserve, or improve. And it's, it's kind of an ancillary support mechanism to the future land use map? That's kind of a broad stroke of saying, you know, in the areas that are changed, these are areas that we, you know, we realize are going to change in some way, so what way? What would you want? And that can kind of reference more the future land use map. Areas to preserve, areas where what they are now is, is what the community would like them to be ten years from now. And then improve areas where you've got? It's not so much a conversation about a, an issue of use, or an issue of maybe even density, but just improve, right? What is there in the? That's focused a lot around M twenty-four, you know, you do have a bit of a built environment in most areas, not all. Along M twenty-four that, you know, could benefit from improvement, either be in the form of traffic management, types of uses and development, so on and so forth. That's not the focus of our next step, but that's just the maps from, from right to left. So with that, unless there's any, unless there's any questions, really what I'd like to do is to have us, I've got markers? And, and again, get your feedback on what we've got so far. Again, if there's questions prior to that, I'm, I'm happy to go through it, but that's kind of my next step.
Well, let's step on over there.
Alright.
You and the audience, I invite you.
I hope that was okay.
Yeah. After you. Give that marker.
I know, I'm just. I'm the owner.
So for the, and again, everyone kind of coming in, it's best you can see it, but for right now, this is kind of the best way to go, but this is where? You know, again, these areas that we, we put circles around are areas that indicate some of the changes that took place from this map to here. Again, we can see that there's been an expansion of light industrial. We've reduced these densities more to, uh, twenty nineteen. And down in through here, we've reduced them off of, you know, what we're talking about in this area, you know, same with this density.
You reduced density?
Yes, yeah. There was, uh, it was either a maintenance back to twenty nineteen? Or a reduction off of, it still might be a little bit above what twenty nineteen was, but it's not as high as maybe we had thought it should be here. So, again, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
I have some thoughts.
Yeah.
I don't wanna mark, I wanna.
I don't talk.
I wanna talk, and then you guys, yay or nay. I went back to the.
I'm sorry, one more, I know, I'm sorry. One more thing, is when we're, when we're talking about? You know, when we're talking about densities, when we're talking about uses, um, there, there has to be? There should be a method to the madness, right, so like, infrastructure plays a huge role in what you're talking about doing when it comes to densities. And the infrastructure that, that kind of plays to that the most are your roads, right, your traffic, your water, and your sewer. So, we've talked a lot about those things over the last couple of months, we're gonna talk about them more for the coming months. But as we start to like, mark this up and think about this, and think about that, think about your infrastructure as well, so? Now you can talk, John.
This is a little awkward. Okay, going back to the balance. We know we're running our sewer line, and help me with these streets here. From Market up this way, with the intent of going and tying in our light industrial. I'd like this, I'd like to see suggestion, some of this area become light industrial? Uh, possibly take out this multifamily down, up here, which probably won't? Uh, be developed in that particular area. But bring the multifamily down closer to the, for all practical purposes, to the village. I don't know if it's here or there, I know we have multi, where's Drainer Road? Okay, we have a lot of multifamily down here that's not developed, we have, um, some vacant parcels there.
It was the, the missionaries, I know Everest bought one of those properties.
Across the street, I'm talking on the north side of Drainer, next to Pinecrest Apartments, there's some property there. We go out to, uh, Oxford Road, we're, uh? The two, the, it's between the village and the township.
Oxford Lake?
Cross from, uh, Pinecrest, uh, excuse me, cross from the, uh? Bumblebee out there, where the, retirement centers. Okay, so we have some multifamily up there on two different parcels, one's in the village, one's in the township. Those have not been developed, so if we could somehow bring some of that multifamily down? Because? Conversations of today, and, and the past is that, you've got all your light industrial here. You've got people that are gonna work out here, they're gonna fill these shop floors and things. They won't be able to live in Rochester, they won't be able to live? Anywhere down in Oxford, they're coming from abroad. If we did some multifamily, more multifamily designated areas down in here? That was to the point with less costly than what we have today? Then we can expand this area up here a little bit. Uh, move the multifamily down, then help balance things? I don't know where to draw the line, but from the north side.
But, uh, I understand what you're trying to do.
Upside down, too.
But as you get too much industrial, if you get up here, you have a larger, some of the larger lots.
You can work that industrial down.
Apparently not a county, but.
Yeah.
I think that's what this is originally intended for, some type of buffer between industrial or residential? You have to think of that, too, and maybe.
I, I understand.
Maybe you don't make a multifamily, maybe you make it office service or something.
Yeah, and you can come over into this area here possibly, and you're not, we're not talking to property owners, we're, we're talking concepts tonight.
Yeah.
Okay? You have areas here, you've got some areas, uh, around that we could do that. So that's kind of what I'm thinking as far as balancing. I'm not too much in favor of loading up anything more at M twenty-four and Drainer Road. We have plenty of activity, uh, in that area right now, whether it's not completed building? Or completed building, but we have a lot of activity down there, so anything new down there, I would be very cautious in what we put in, put in down there.
So let's dress up in a room.
Sure.
I think it's right here, but just north of Bevibe, is, is an industrial building.
Correct.
It's a storage facility.
Okay, well.
It's a, it's, it's, it's a new.
Use.
Yeah.
Or unit.
Flex building, probably.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you, you've got some of that down here already. I don't know if you wanna put more of the, uh?
I don't disagree. Industrial.
I'm serious.
You're talking about like something like this kind of expanding out of this area?
Well, not so much on this side, but on this side here, right next to what you already got. You know, you've got this in here.
Those are the townhouses, the apartments, yeah.
Of course.
Abbey Ridge.
Yeah. Well, I think this is all, again, this is kind of, yeah, John's kind of conversation of, of the balance between like? You know, multifamily being down here to start to support a lot of these different commercial, and mixed-use use of down this way? With the industrial up here, this ironically is probably some of the more developable multifamily lot you have. You know, as opposed to these kind of sort of really small stuff down there. Um, one thing I, before we go all up in the room, I do wanna point out. Yep, there was a, uh, there was a mapping error in this area where we had, I think this is actually commercial or mixed-use.
Senior's commercial.
Yeah, so that, that was actually a GIS mapping area, that would be put back to the commercial. So, just, just pointing out the critical area.
Thought we changed it to residential.
Based on your session, does it come in front of us a couple of times with this? Then we've always said no.
Well, I think it's.
So both sides of the road here.
I think they've asked us to.
Just for. So, this two.
Yeah.
These guys. But this other here.
Yep.
To me, so if there's anything else around this lake, this residential, why would we?
How about? How, no, put that back, you gotta, I gotta point. How about making one side residential?
I agree, that's the south side.
Seventy percent? I'm too busy trying to hold these.
Sounds good.
I'm probably gonna be kicked out of the township for asking, but? With, with the school now having all this property on Drainer? Be nice if we could have that back for multifamily or light residential.
Which one do you want back? That's the back half of Abbey Ridge that goes out on Oxford Lake Road?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good thought.
Where are you, where are you, I wanna, getting all this in the south side?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna convince the school to move to high school, but this?
Kind of this piece.
Purple spot here? All this is the current high school football field and everything, and that field that they now own? But with them just buying that whole Drainer Road property? Be nice if we could ever get.
I mean, it's crazy that they were vacating.
This is the high school.
Right.
This is a vacant piece of property that, that the, the school?
It's right here.
Land-balanced.
Yeah, but what I want, I'd like to see the street go all the way.
Well, that is where I was going. So if this is land-balanced, it's already land-balanced by the school. So, if it could be sold out from the school, then you could run, the original plan was to have Market Street run all the way up through that and come through.
So there's a bit of a conversation about like, do we wanna like, have this multifamily stretch a little bit over there in anticipation?
Sure. I don't, I know that property, isn't the property that was land-balanced is right here?
No.
No.
Then what property is right there?
That's undeveloped.
Yeah, still unknown.
No.
Isn't that where the storage unit is?
This is the storage unit over here, down.
That might be.
No.
Anyways.
Where's the other?
This may help out a little bit, that's the school right there, so you're saying some of it was land-balanced, to me it looks like.
That was land-balanced, that's the storage.
That's the storage, the storage unit's probably there in blue, so? It looks like it's there and possibly somewhere.
Storage unit is further down, a few. Another storage unit is further down, few.
That's it, storage, storage. So, yeah.
So, that would be something.
Cause originally it was all one unit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, that would answer a lot of our questions, it would answer transportation, it would answer some, uh, multi-family. Uh, that, that would be a win-win for everybody, so, just ideas.
Okay. Yeah, oh yeah. Sorry. One of my first question on that.
Why isn't it bigger?
Yeah, it'd be a heck of a nice. Can we put different shades in here? I know what you guys are asking from the density perspective, give you all respect for coming here and answering.
Yeah.
As much density as you can get, that's what I would expect.
Right.
I'm on the opposite side. Everybody here knows I push for less density, I have a five acre lot all across the township. Me, this is why a lot of people move out here because of that. But I understand your ask, and I know a lot of things you need, and one of the things we are drastically missing is the condos we have here on Gulf Hill.
Missing middle housing.
Right, cause all, I mean, those go for sale, quite a lot are left to go. Right, so I know we need all those condos.
Now, who do those attract, those upstairs and?
No, they're, they're like, it's specifically targeting like an active adult demographic, yeah.
So, I mean, if that was gonna be somewhat in here, I could see that, but I'd also like larger lots on the side of that, right? But I wanna be able to, with multi-shade.
What about, um, active, or active adult or senior or people that are older, who wanna stay within the community, giving them an opportunity? Cause they don't necessarily want that five acre lot any longer, you know, cause.
Probably.
They're maintaining it, but they wanna stay in the community. Um, you know, to have something that's more barrier-free, ranch-style, um.
We call it a primary down unit, where the primary bedroom, the master bedroom, the kitchen, the living room, all of those critical areas are on the first floor. And then the second floor has, you know, there's normally a secondary bedroom on, on the first floor, but the upper floor potentially has an office, a third bedroom, flex areas. You know, so that attracts the missing middle housing, what's, what's also interesting about that, when you look at empty nesters, their trap, but they will tell you, the traffic patterns are obviously a lot different than they are for conventional single family. You know, people who are fifty-five plus normally could be a single individual, it could be a couple, less likely to have kids. Their traffic patterns are a little bit off-peak hours from younger families. And then number two, their utilities, their usage on utilities. Yeah. But they, you know, we, we have data about water and sewer, they use like half the water and sewer of, so that's sometimes the concern, you know. This is in the secondary utility district right now, but we've been working with Jim Sharp. There's a, a water site that's going in, in Camp Oakland, which is gonna, you know, allow more development to happen. There's sewer availability on US twenty-four based off of what Mr. Sharp tells us, we think with, you know, whatever we come with, there will be adequate capacity. Do we know that for certain? No, but that's what sort of the guiding, um, you know, that, that, that Jim has given us, Jim's a, a very, very good guy. Uh, so, you know, we think there's adequate utilities there, obviously, the ultimate question is what type of density you wanna see, you know. My little argument was, look, what do you have to the north? You've got, you know, the, the, you're calling it village residential, uh, R one A, which I think is allowed, R one A's six thousand square. But, you know, sometimes zoning doesn't perfectly match the master plan, but you know, there's, that's a lot of what's here, you know, obviously the mobile home parks holder, you got multi-family. But, but when I was pointing that out, you know, like you look at this, this is called the, the Hills of Oxford, you got multiple kinds of product.
I mentioned this twice, where is that mobile home park?
Manufactured housing community. Yeah. Yeah, so that's their.
What you're saying is kind of what the vision is consistent with the goal. More density close to the, close to the village, which would be the empty nesters, then as you're going down towards the lake, you've got the bigger lots. That, that conceptually works, works from, from a development standpoint. And, yeah, I just wanna say, it's consistent with the stated goal of traveling and expanding the size of the lots as you get away from.
And, and, and I, you're, I just. Yeah, probably, maybe I'm trying to get you straight there.
Well, it's.
With that in mind, I should. Cause I, I don't want, I don't want close to the houses all the way through here.
Right, and, and break up the zoning designation, so we're not trying to push, force the plan, because we're forcing it through like a cluster. Where we're gonna say, okay, we need this up here and we're removing some of the densities on the south side, which may not give us enough density to do. You know, there's some walkways and things that everybody's looking for, pedestrian walkways, you know, we wanna offer a lot of that stuff up, but if we can, um, you know, create something that is more multi-generational. Or even just empty nester. I mean, there is a huge market for empty nester product.
And, and you got, we have to be careful of that, because as the solar tsunami comes and it drops off the grid.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure we can still sell on some water. I hate to say that, but we gotta think about that. But, I mean, I'd like to pick up Gulf Hill and put it right, part of it right there, that's what I would like to do, just that development itself.
I'm sorry, which development? Okay, uh, what's, okay, so those are the con, are those the, they're just the detached condos, right? Not the, or the duplexes?
The duplexes.
duplex condos.
Yeah, cause they got some duplex condos, they got some small lot condos, yeah.
And we get more people asking.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We do not have enough helping this stuff.
Yeah, that's what we proposed on the north end when we first were talking, I think there were four flex units instead of two flex, but do we can do duplex? Uh, that's not an issue. It's just, that, that's such a big piece to say that it's just single family, we don't have, really the flexibility to start offering some of those up, cause we're eating up the density. And if we were able, be able to spread different land uses on there, I think that, um, it would start to make a little bit more sense from our standpoint, from a development perspective, to accomplish the types of products that you were talking about.
It's really a unique property, cause it's two hundred six acres in total, the gross acreage, but as we look at the net acreage, what's really developable, once you take out Bailey Lake and once you take out some of the wetlands and some of the other sensitive tree stands, we think there's like a hundred forty acres there. So, you know, regardless, there's, there's gonna, your open space calculations don't allow water and don't allow wetlands, only part of that's considered open space. So, when I talked about it, you know, we had a plan put together, that we sure had forty percent open space per the definition of your ordinance, but really that's an excess, probably a fifty, fifty-five percent open space throughout the whole development, so.
So, let me do this.
Yeah.
It's all a bit brighter. You know, permission space, no, I mean, you have to do, right, you have to, the potential multiple designations, that right, again. And we'll kind of, when we get to talking about the small area plans, this will kind of come back into focus. Are there any other comments on the permission, as with the kind of this area?
We don't have a lot of. We're, we're working with Camp Oakland now to do some probing, to see if we can get added a lot, and we have to.
Uh, we, we heard it was approved, has it not been approved?
It's in with Eagle.
It's in with Eagle right now. It's been, yeah.
Camp Oakland's given us permission to go up and drill, it's with Eagle, it should be out of Eagle from what Camp Oakland said last week at our meeting. But there's a lot of work that has to be, to be done between now and then to put the site in, plus six million dollar, more than a month.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the sets being.
Big one.
Kind of considering a designation again, based on the conversation about some of the traffic, based on conversations about the traffic.
That was good, I liked that.
We know how to pay for it.
First time tonight you're gonna get that, that was good. Not from the homeowner.
I know that, right? Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm, on this one, again, it'll come up when we talk about small area plans, but I think.
There's not one person in this room that doesn't know that there's a lot of attention on that piece of property.
Yeah, of course.
And somebody mentioned four different developers, and.
It's a desirable piece, for sure.
I just wanna make sure that we think it through very cautiously for the balance within the community. Because just on the one across the street, Evelyn right here is over, because she's very concerned about the things that are important to them as existing residents within the township.
Sure.
We're concerned about the five-year, the ten-year out. And that is no fun intersection, I've been here for thirty-five years and never ceases to make me with that intersection city release, or not please.
Yeah.
Mr. Kierke, can you make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is all wonderful discussion. Um, most of it centers on edifices and density. And you did mention something about open spaces. I'm just wondering, how much greenery will we be able to look at from either Drainer or M twenty-four? As I know, I know, we, we don't have a, a developer per se right now, but you, right now, we're looking at beautiful green golf course, and I know things change. But don't we have to consider that? The natural beauty of it, we're talking balance?
Throw, throw in your best pitch and then I can keep the train going.
Sure, sure, so through, through the P U D ordinance, that's actually a, a planned unit development allows you to sway a little bit, you know, from, from the standard ordinance, uh, requirements. But the P U D actually has a design criteria in there for larger perimeter buffers than what a conventional cookie cutter, single-family development would require. So that.
The plan would have quite a bit of, of, um, like this area is wet, so that's gonna pretty much stay. You'll see, you see that now off of Drainer Road when you look south.
Same off of twenty-four, there's some low line areas.
Same off of twenty-four, you know, it runs down very quickly, the topography.
We wanna try to create a dramatic entrance and really create nice.
That would be part of our discussion on our plan, is we can increase buffers, we have sixty percent open space. So, we can kind of move some of those buffers around, um, and then cluster our density so we can keep the green.
And for the, and for this, and for the sake of public record and confusion, nothing is proposed?
No.
Nothing has been put in front of us, nothing has been sold? So, again, I know you guys have, we would, you know.
Yeah, yeah, sure, it's our vision.
She's taking notes over there and I just want, the next thing is gonna be huge.
Yeah.
There's.
If I could add, I would answer your question by saying yes. And I would say yes, because the answer is, it's gonna be part of that small plan, and it's gonna end up being a P U D that's gonna have to go through and be approved by the commission. And the commission's gonna make sure that that is addressed, because the whole goal is, it's not a, a, I don't re, I don't see this being a pro-builder, crazy development community. It's not, and that, that's the beauty of the community, is to preserve what you have. And you're not, whichever developer ultimately ends up making that presentation, he's not gonna get anywhere if he's coming up and throwing up a bunch of houses on the border of, 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 of the entire lots, so that it's crossed, crossed off, it just won't happen.
Set it.
Yeah, so here's.
Things that we have to really be conscious of, we've got three major, I call them major, three major developments that, one is finishing up, one is in the outskirts of land balancing, and the one has just been approved. All eyes and sights are gonna be on those three. If there is a good flavor from those three, then it helps the golf course area. And that's been a concern that I've had is, is that those are some big developments, the one across the street is a large development, Tellmore, Tellmore North, excuse me.
So, you're fine, and you get the last word.
I'm done.
So, I wanna, I wanna just, which because we, you know, hot focus of a good community, I just, huh?
I'm on overtime.
You're on overtime, and you build me. Okay. Any other areas, right, I mean, like I said, these, these red are highlight, highlighted changes from the first one we did two weeks ago to this one, again, mostly. Either going back to nineteen or going back to nineteen densities, or kind of reducing where we had increased again. Were there any other concerns or issues? I'm sorry?
Question.
Okay.
Are, uh, you going to have another map that chose a long-range proposed road?
Like a, so like a kind of a proposed road infrastructure kind of map within the plan, yeah, in the transportation section, I believe we have that.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, comments on our map here?
So, what's our next step with this?
Our next step is, I'm gonna work with kind of the light industrial up this way, you know, some of the small changes in here, we're gonna kind of work to see maybe can we get more multi-family in this area, make these corrections.
This was another, I think you and I talked about this one. The back half of this commercial property, make it a, a, a multi-family, possibly.
And there is some here, but you're trying to adding it up in this area as well.
I'm just, as a discussion point.
Let me. So, again, the thought process, I think the thought process being is.
Cross from the Myers gas station is what you're preaching.
We had a, kind of it mentioned last, two weeks ago, and that some of the areas where we're increasing density around some of the light industrial and commercial was to develop support, you know, supportive, supportive housing from the perspective of what kind of workers, what would they make at those types of institutions and how we support that. And even though they were lower density developments, you know, Commissioner Bailey made the good point of like, you put on six thousand square lot, if you work at those certain places, you're not gonna be able to fold a single-family home. So, that's been part of the conversation, is if we, do we wanna start kind of expanding our multi-family footprint where we're talking about expanding industrial and commercial? Are there any thoughts or comments around this?
That's the sandman. Not to have too many, we're talking about the sandman problem, we lost it.
Right there.
That's the sandman.
Cause I saw, I was like, what's the sandman property? I was like, something.
I think sandman is currently.
Just twelve thousand on the last one, it's twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand on this one, yeah. So, sandman is twenty-five thousand square foot lots. I'll, I'll take this comment, I don't.
It's a lot of water there, it'd be hard to do two acres.
Go back to the church?
Wait, let me, let me make sure.
Wait.
Hold on. To check this truck, so once I lose you, yeah, once I lose you, I'm not gonna get your bag. Um, yes, you can sit down.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thank you guys. Hey, who's that man? Yeah.
Okay, where are we going, chief?
So, my next kind of line was to relate some maps, which would be the change, preserve, improve, and kind of continue to track it as well. Um, again, this is kind of an ancillary support mechanism of the future land use map. We can include it, we can change it, we can take it out, you know, if you think that it helps, serves the purpose of again, trying to paint maybe a bit broader of a stroke with the balancing act that we're working on. Do you think they will with it? If you think it's confusing or in some ways redundant, it can go. But we at least wanted to put it out there again, based on kind of the conversation two weeks ago, seeing maybe this helps generalize.
Well, that's what we were just talking about earlier, we were balancing, moving things around, I like this.
Any other thoughts or comments on the map?
We won't bring that up.
No. Spelling.
It's the most misspelled word in America.
Thank you for not publicly humiliating, you know, whatever I misspelled.
I wasn't even gonna bring it up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You already did though.
Now, the question I have is, is that this map needs a better title than Oxford Township. Let's put a good title on it with this map supposed to represent, and then we need to make sure that this map. Coin sides or with the map we just marked up, correct?
Yes. Okay. All right. Commissioner Bailey?
I'm good, I like it.
Nothing additional at this point. Hold on.
What are you, what are you gonna call this map? I'm just curious now. Okay, I'll let you dream that up. You're not gonna discourage anything, correct?
Nope, nope. I'll make a new category, I'll discourage, we'll put, we'll put everything on, uh, video on that. All right, let me, uh, let's see here. Okay, so kind of the, the last big lift for the evening is, uh, the land use chapter draft that we provided, and again, I'd say it's about seventy, I'm sorry, ninety percent there. Uh, there was some reference to some maps that still need to be put in and some tables that still need to be updated. Kind of the, one of the, basically it's set up to where it kind of highlights these guiding principles, right, these guiding factors that were, that were the, that played a very large role in dictating the, the future land use map and the decisions and the, and the conversations that were happening about land use in the township. So, those guiding factors are kind of like the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the eight. So those guiding factors are kind of like the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, the eight primary guiding factors that we are using in making these considerations, and making these changes, and for making decisions down the road. And then within the chapters, kind of just a, an expansion of explaining what those are. So kind of with that, again, you know, I would like to gauge any kind of, you know, we'll get to the small area plans, but I wanted to kind of go through the chapter by text, and see if there were any concerns or clarification or questions. Now, Commissioner Spurges, we talk about transportation, we can jump to it, or we can make our way there, but...
Actually, I don't have any more comments on transportation.
To be honest with you, I don't have any more comments. There's a lot of time put on these future maps.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'm fine with moving forward for now. But I think there's, the transportation area is due its proper review.
And so with the, and Commissioner Spurges, just to make sure I captured your comments about transportation, and the way we've talked about, it's not necessarily a priority that we're going to create, but just kind of taking what's been thrown, what considerations have been put forward here as far as improvements are concerned, but also kind of open up the door for improvements beyond the use of...
Yes, bigger, I think bigger, potential bigger projects. Right, and of course, Market Street going all the way through, I'd like to add it to that list, if it's not...
That's probably the closest doable item that we could possibly have.
It's Oxford Road, correct?
Yep.
All the way to Oxford, correct?
That, that would be huge.
Okay, and with that, last but not least, are the small area plans. And so that goes right, she outlined in the memo. And so, the way, what was approved for the scope of this master plan update were up to three small area plans. And so what we've kind of put in for, in front of you are the three geographies that we think might serve well as those plans. You can change that, you can, again, it's all flexible to this point. To kind of put it in perspective, and I think all commissioners are aware that these water...
I must have missed that, I don't necessarily see that.
Yeah, I didn't see that either.
It's, uh, it's in the memo itself, so if you, um, the front page of the memo, you can see it.
Small area plans? The color I worked.
So we touched on one of them, right?
Yeah, so we talked about, and so, just to, again, I'm pretty sure you guys are aware, like, water zone was a small area.
Yeah, yeah.
So the whole purpose being is kind of painting a much more detailed picture about, it's not just a designation, it's kind of actually starting to design what you would want to see in what area. So for those geographies, we've highlighted some of the guiding principles that we would use when you start to kind of design what those specific areas look like. And so one of them, again, was Oxford Hills, which I know we've, we discussed as it relates to that designation, and some of the, some of the items that we've talked about, some of the guiding items that we would talk about in kind of looking at that area would be preservation of protected open space, wetlands, wooded areas being preserved, the potential for attached, single-family residential, paving, drain, or road, you know, or at least considering the impact on drain or road, as well as the, as well as the intersection of Drainer and M24.
Oh, that has to be redone.
It's kind of part and part, right?
That should be, that should be part of the transportation intersection, has to be considered sooner than later.
Oh, just put a three-lane roundabout.
There we go. With a fountain in the middle.
And red, like, you know, so the whole position, recreational is dedicated within the development itself. This is just draft language, that can change, what, what guides us here can change. It doesn't have to be Oxford Hills Golf Course, but if we're thinking...
Okay, I guess from my perspective, I have the same comments that I made over there for Oxford Hills relative to Golf Hills, and something along those, I'd like to see that in all of those, personally. Because whoever comes to bat first.
So kind of use the Golf Hill as development as...
Yeah, I mean, because we need more, however you want to word it, with some of the terminology that was used, relative to... Yeah. Something along those lines.
Okay, so I think there's, I think there's agreement that Oxford Hill is a small area plan. But that geography is one of the three that we were, that we're gonna dive into. Agreed?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
I think we need to dive in with extreme caution, because there's a lot of things that, that aren't firmed up in regards to the support of a large development in there. I just have a quick question. I was at the early, early, early meeting, and you had about 377 to 400 homes in there. The lower level was duplexes, I call the...
They were ranch-style, the ones to the north that were attached were ranch-style, barrier-free kind of living.
Okay.
And then there were 60-foot lots and 80-foot lots.
60 down, but, but, were those...
60 was kind of in the...
Were those homes, or were those...
So there were, there were, I don't remember the exact numbers, but let's just say we had 107, 160 attached to that, so if we're just rounding to 400, 400 homes. 120, 60 footers, a little bit further east, and then we got further south, 128.
I, I just want to reiterate, we need to proceed with extreme caution, or with care.
Understandably so, but, but the geography itself, that should be a small area plan.
Oops, sorry. Wrong button. It's his fault. Distracting me.
Sometimes I feel like a teacher up here, like in a high school class. Look, you put your phones away.
Children.
Oh, you're fine. So, okay, are there any, right, obviously, when we're looking at that area, we want to think about infrastructure, right, it's gonna be a huge part of the conversation for that area. Are there other, other, other guiding factors, either kind of what we've offered that you would agree, should you probably consider, or should you remove, this part of that consideration?
No, I think that's a good list.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with John that, you know, we need to be cautious on that one, but...
Well, this isn't the end, like I said, this is, we, we're drafting the plan, we are, we're still well in the draft.
We have a major port of our evening tonight around that topic.
Correct.
And we have representation here for that, so...
It's the, in my opinion, we need to be cautious on all of them. And we're not developing anything, we're just here putting some rough guidelines on some things as from a master plan perspective, so...
That's fair.
Nor do I want to presume that we're leading any, anything on.
Understand, okay. Alright, well, so for the next one, our apologies, it's, uh, there was, there was some incorrect information in the 19 plan that was used to inform this, but the next one is not Sandman East of M24, it's Levy. So this would be the Ray Road, M24 area. And so that's another area that we identified as, you know, potential for doing a small plan on. And so again, this is...
What, the basis of your small plan is acreage, or just geographic?
Uh, I, I guess geographic as it relates to anticipated changes over the next five to 10 years. You know, I guess larger, larger areas that will likely see... The best way to express it is, is change pressure, right, there, those are not, it's not gonna be aligned forever, you know. Uh, and so what it does, again, do we want to be in a position like, well, we have a small area plan, where we can kind of guide? What is, what is the, what is the more defined idea for that area?
From those, those mining locations, how far out do we look? Because I know there's a couple that are decades out, that why would we even touch them?
Yeah, and there's, there's a table in the range plan that kind of projects how long...
Right, I saw that.
...in operation, but that needs to be updated.
Okay. Because of some of the wording after that, I think you were trying to imply that, and some of the ones that are out there for two or three decades were not in a necessary word, but I don't think it was clear.
Yeah, so I mean, from the perspective of what, what guided us to select these areas was having a timing of when they could see...
Great.
A change of use.
So what was, there's two, am I correct on reading this, there's two?
No, there's one more, if you...
M24 corridor?
M24 corridor.
Okay, well, so you got Oxford Hills Golf Course, and you have Levy, the property up, um...
Ray and 24.
Ray and 24. What other areas, there, there's, there's discussion across the street here.
And, and that's not one of the areas that we selected, but it could be, so the...
Are you looking for ideas in selection?
Yeah, I mean, I want to gauge, are these, are these small, are the geographies that we picked for these plans, the ones that you want us to kind of pick further in, in working with you guys, developing, working as well as... So I think that's, I think that's...
Well, one of the things that we did is we visited Levy, Megan and myself visited out there. We need to get together possibly, and discuss that, to make sure it's gonna meet up with what plans are here. And possibly the same thing with Oxford Hills Golf Course.
Okay. Alright, so then, and that's, that's a great point, right? So like, tonight, if I walk away with, these are the three areas we want to set in the small plans. The bullet points, we'll get to later, but the three areas, I guess, is what I want to walk away tonight. So I've got, I've got, my first two are, are these. The last one is the M24 corridor, north of the city, and again, that is, that is in conversation with the commercial, multifamily, the industrial.
Got it.
You could do that, or again, like you had mentioned, across the street, that could be a small...
Well, you've got, Levy is one of the biggest property owners in Oxford. So you have the Levy at Ray and 24, you have the Levy property over here, I, I think you need to include that one, too.
You've gotten, so what was approved, was three?
Approved was three from...
The scope of the master plan project.
From, approved from, from us?
Yeah, from the township board, back when it was, uh, back when the scope was put together.
Oh, the township board wanted to see three areas?
That's what was included in the scope that we provided that was approved.
That's what they quoted, basically.
Yes, that's what we quoted.
Then, proceed.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah, I agree.
We're talking about geography, so the three areas we've picked.
Yeah.
Again, based on, based on criteria of anticipated change in uses.
Yeah, I'd, I'd go with those three. I mean, the only question I'd have is, you know, if Levy's not gonna do anything for the next decade or more, is it worth looking at right now, but if they are, then yeah.
And I think that's part of the...
Or possibly another of the Levy properties.
So, yeah, maybe that speaks to John's guidance, so let's talk about...
What, what do we know about the Sandman property off of Drainer? Drainer and Newman? I think that's done.
In our, right, so the mining is not big there. I know that we, there hasn't been any kind of pre-applications or conversations, you know, at the counter at the township hall regarding that site, so I guess I couldn't speak to how quickly they would be looking to redevelop that property. I would say, I, I would say that it would be, if we were into a scope where maybe more small area plans were possible, I can see that coming up as kind of a secondary type of focus. Given its location on Drainer, I think it's, there's gonna be a really strong residential focus there of one kind or another. You know, these areas that we've identified here, or again, they have a residential interest in them.
It's around a lake, it's being established for a residential site, so I would presume that it would be very high demand once it goes in.
Sure. Sounds like I've got my three. Okay. Alright. I'm good. I really appreciate you guys' time tonight, and we've covered a lot of, a lot of ground, I got a lot of good feedback, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have any new business, so number 12, communication, community reports. Anything from the Economic Development Committee?
Nothing. Nope.
Ordinance Review Committee?
We continue to work on the energy plan, hoping to bring it to this committee in June, we talked about that in our last meeting. And so that's sort of where we're at.
Alright, well, thank you. Number 13, planner, engineering reports, do you have anything new?
The only thing that we're, really working on right now is, On Clay Space 3 has submitted for preliminary site plan, so we're working through that. Probably, probably getting it in front of you guys sometime. Sometime in one of the June meetings, who, that perspective, I just started, but, other than that, business as usual, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, and nothing from Sher. Guess with that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll second it.
I'll make the motion, adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I was hoping he made it.